The action plan.
I was just teasing you. I said, did you late answer your question or did she ask?
No, it's a little bit of both. In regards to the action plan on the 1.41, 1.4 million, is there a, uh, does it speak towards how long it's going to take to get out the money, the budget and have a balanced budget?
So, I'll throw in my two cents and then throw it to Scott so you get four cents out of this. Um, in December, we felt really, really strong about, um, being very bold and correcting that by the close of this school year. Um, especially since in most situations, if you do not close the year showing that you satisfied the deficit that's been identified, um, it could result in having a fiscal monitor from the state come in and really, you know, keep, keep very close watch. So, in the best interest of the organization, we spent many nights um, over the Christmas break and, you know, right, right through that, that early January time period, um, identifying all the ways we could, we could in fact make that happen. Um, we even wound up going to, you know, uh, receiving good, uh, volunteerism from our principals association. I know that I've sacrificed my merit to pay opportunities, but I will continue the work. Um, so by January, we felt very good that that would be satisfied this year. However, then we got hit with the, uh, OFAC report. So that was sort of a game changer. Um, but I think that the important thing to present to the community is that our relationship with the county has been very transparent, has been very open, and has been very honest in the progress we're making. And they are, um, not giving us such a firm, hard deadline on what needs to be done by when at this time. Um, I think they're looking at our, our progress and looking to see that we're making this a priority and that we're giving it our full, full attention and making good decisions without sacrificing anything for our students. So, I feel really good about that continuing and whether or not they're ready to turn around and give us a hard one to, to untie. I can't say that's not going to happen. I can only speak about this in the present day and the present day is much more of a team monitoring as opposed to saying you must do this or else. Uh, I'll throw it over to Scott now.
I agree with the conversation with the county VA. And basically, is it we've progressed through the deficit? Long as we're making progress, we're okay with that. I have gotten a strict timeline. It's got to be done. My law, you haven't done three years. The county deficit, so all the time, just keep going. If you make a progress, you can point to the county VA and where I'm at and as long as that keeps moving forward, it should be okay.
It's on the long end. It could take up to three years.
That's, that's long, yes.
And that, and that's recorded.
That's by code, code allows three years, yes.
I think very much so.
Are you non-agenda? Or agenda?
Nothing about that agenda.
Gotta be the next quarter.
Let you decide. My two questions. One is about local schools and the other one is the new building we're building.
Okay, that'll be, that'll be in the next agenda. The new building, we can't help it. That's the county. That's township. Okay, finance committee. Chris?
Any board member who states any of the following listed actions under the category of financial facilities in the year 2023 may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions to be entertained. Hearing none, I make the motion that one through nineteen.
One through thirteen. Do I have a second? Second. Broko. Ms. Malick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Ramnopolis, four. Ms. Rappiscata, four. Ms. Grillo, four. Ms. Donovan, four. Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcari. Ms. Vona, four. Education and curriculum, sure. Oh, I'm sorry. I have nineteen.
Lawyer, uh, on second or make motion for nineteen.
Lawyer, second. Broko. Ms. Malick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Ramnopolis, four. Ms. Rappiscata, four. Ms. Grillo, four. Ms. Donovan, four. Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcari. Ms. Vona, four. Education and curriculum, sure.
I just want to say in form like, uh, I read my, uh, items involved. There was a high school musical, high school musical that was in quarantine last weekend and last weekend. It was an absolutely magnificent show and we still have, we set it still up. But to all that were involved, the students, the, the stage managers, the tech staff, the artistic staff, and the children and the, and the directors, if you didn't see it, you really missed out on a great night. Just such a credit to our leader and to everyone else that was involved. The high school principal, all our, all our administrators and staff. It was just a magnificent, magnificent show. So, I'd like to say that before I read my educational. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of education and curriculum committee, may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make the motion that one through three be accepted. Yes.
Broko. Ms. Malick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Ramnopolis, four. Ms. Rappiscata, four. Ms. Grillo, four. Ms. Donovan, four. Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcari. Ms. Vona, four. Policies and rules and regulations. Ms. Rappiscata.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the categories of policies and rules and regulations may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, uh, I make the motion that five through five be accepted.
Second.
Broko. Ms. Malick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Ramnopolis, four. Ms. Rappiscata, four. Ms. Grillo, four. Ms. Donovan, four. Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcari. Ms. Vona, four. Athletics, student activities, substance abuse. Ms. Alcari.
Okay. I want, want, once again, congratulate our winter teams. My newfound love for wrestling, that I've been at the matches, the kids have just performed with wonderful, wonderful representation for our school district as well as our community. Um, I also want to congratulate the boys and girls basketball teams who have made it to the state's tournaments, our rest, of course, our wrestling team, which I just said, and our swimming team, as well as our indoor and outdoor, our indoor track, the girls and boys teams. I understand that we are, uh, state champions and this was the first year that we, uh, initiated this sport. So, I'd like to congratulate them and, you know what? When you go to see these kids, you can't believe the talent that Linners has. So, follow our sports team. Once again, Linners pride. Thank you. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of athletics, student activities, substance abuse committee, may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make the motion that one through three be accepted.
Second.
Broko. Ms. Malick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Ramnopolis, four. Ms. Rappiscata, four. Ms. Grillo, four. Ms. Donovan, four. Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcari. Ms. Vona, four.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of new business, may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted, accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I move that one through six be adopted.
Second.
Broko. Ms. Malick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Ramnopolis, four. Ms. Rappiscata, four. Ms. Grillo, four. Ms. Donovan, four. Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcari. Ms. Vona, four. Do we ever report that to the public that, all four through five is about?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of new business, may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Um, I move number two through twenty-six. Second.
Broko. Ms. Malick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Ramnopolis, four. Ms. Rappiscata, four. Ms. Grillo, four. Ms. Donovan, four. Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcari. Ms. Vona, four.
Be resolved that the Linners Board of Education will accept the resignation of the faculty and graduates who are in the schools and use their education for the rest of their lives.
Second.
Broko. Ms. Malick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Ramnopolis. Ms. Rappiscata, four. Ms. Grillo.
We are losing a great leader, a great superintendent. I have to say.
Ms. Donovan.
I gotta say this and I, I apologize because, um, uh, this goes back and I'm gonna use your line. I'm gonna rewind, uh, rewind, push rewind back to, uh, fall of 2016 and, uh, there was football games going on in Port and Ran and there was our superintendent underneath that tent with all pictures of what's going to be done with the referendum. There is no other town in the state of New Jersey that has a superintendent that had the passion that you did and the vision. And when I got elected to the board, I saw what you were doing with the curriculum and I was unbelievably impressed. Your passion and dedication to this school, these kids and this school, it so happened and it is literally, I, I, and I told you this, and I told you, and, and I can't accept your resignation, but for you, I, I would accept the resignation with great pride.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcari. Ms. Vona.
I, I really want to say no. It looks unbelievable. There's no other way to put it. And this system is losing the best thing that has happened to it in many, many years. I, I really want to say no. I didn't want to sign that thing tonight, but because you wanted, uh, I said yes, but with deep regret.
Yeah, just stay here.
I'm sorry to wait on you, but today, because what I have to say has to do with some training in case of emergency. And I noticed how certain people when that noise in the back jumped. Susan, you look like you jumped on your skin then when you heard that noise in the back. And our officer jumped too. I couldn't see anybody here, but what I'd like to propose is the town is offering this Saturday and I think we can get Eric at heading and Kate to do it again. CPR lessons, re-charging, we get a call that every teacher in every classroom know how to do CPR. Children come around at the age of six. So, instead of just seniors in the high school, every student in the high school, they might say the like of friends standing next to them in case anything happens. And the other thing I'd like to say is pressure bandages put in every classroom just in case of emergency and the teachers know how to use them. You know, I was a Girl Scout. My honor is to be prepared. I have boxes in my house. If we get snowstorm, I don't have to go out because I can't walk. If someone says, well, be fine more than alcohol. I need a month's worth of my clothing in the house. Now the why. You know, I have a empty charging in my house to do some month's work. But I like to be prepared and I'd like to see all our teachers prepared. It's because they're safe plus our students. And I think everybody would feel a bit safer if everybody knew some first aid because you could help everybody. And if we want to offer CPR to any of the teachers, I talked to Eric, he's our head M T in town. He even has some, um, friends that even help them. And pressure bandages are expensive, so maybe we can put out donation cans. Maybe we can have the PTA's help us. There's loads of ways we can pay for it. All we need are people willing to learn how to do it. Okay?
Thank you.
Now, one other thing. Yeah, I read a lot of papers and magazines, like to joke around with people that know me. I'm always reading other schools put in about teachers and few different things. Uh, so we had Russell School Magazine paper. This is so, we had strong traffic board down there. I want to know, could we have more of this? Could we arrange for them to go to every school? There was a nine eleven global level comment, important kids about it. I feel as teachers have a lot to do. We can have, uh, board checkings very involved in science will help us out. I'm willing to write letters and I think we should put more of teachers' due somewhere in the paper. But this way, everybody will know what Linners is doing on the good side, not the bad side. And if anybody wants any lettering, get any of these there. You're glad to talk to them. If you're busy, give you a call. Thank you.
A few things I'd like to bring to your attention. How come the school board doesn't put the agenda of the school board's meeting on their website like the town does? Even though you're supposed to get it a few days ahead of time within forty-eight hours of a meeting? I know it's subject to change, but you think you could do that? Actually put your agenda on your website like the town does. But you don't do it now, like the actual agenda. It's a, a thing you should do. It's more communication, more for the people to see and blah, 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 blah.
It's on the website in the board of education tab.
Yeah, but when it go on there, it only gives you the date. It doesn't give you the attachment. And then sometimes it's not even up there.
What kind of date? Typically, our meetings are on, on Monday, so our practice is typically on Friday to have that posted. Um, but it, it is on the board of education tab.
Yes.
On there first or to find it, but.
Do you put the work meeting minutes on here too or do that minutes back too? The work meetings that you had, do you take minutes on the work meetings? And your committee meetings, you, and you also have commu-, committee meetings. Do you take, you have to take minutes back too? Okay, do you put the committee meetings on here too, on the website?
The committee meetings?
Yeah, you should have to take minutes back too. Well, think about it. More communication, that's better.
We'll take that. We'll take, sure.
Okay, um, just a few questions. Um, we were under a D as a report card of the district. Have we come up with that, above that? This is like age out though. I mean, I think I say T yet, you know, but go ahead.
Please, please remember, um, the criteria for those ratings are, are, the people who rate us are the New Jersey Department of Education. And how do they rate us? They rate us by school performance. So, if you go to the NJDOE website, you want to see the school accountability profile, okay? That's now done through ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. That's, that, that is so user friendly now and I encourage you to, to see that. Also there, you see our school performance reports. So, the school performance reports are slightly different than the county profile, which is the district, right? And that will show you everything. Um, it also will show you a comparison across state or across nations on a variety of the topics. Um, as you may or may not know, that is why attendance became so critical this year and why, you know, uh, the release of Call of Duty at, you know, midnight and can't constitute an absence the next day because that doesn't look good for us. So, um, you know, these, these are the factors that came in when the No Child Left Behind Act was replaced with ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. I, I understand there are so many different ratings groups and surveys and, um, you know, polls.
What was the average?
That, that report. I, I pay no, I pay no attention to any of those because the criteria depends on what they want to survey on. For example, I was speaking to the North Arlington superintendent and, you know, commending him on being the, the best town to live in in New Jersey. And I asked him what the criteria was and it was, like how floats in proximity, you know, the average house was to a town library? How many, you know, how, how much green space there was? So, the criteria is very, very different and that's why I just really, really encourage us to kind of break away from putting focus on the surveys, the polls and the ratings and to really know about the district, see how we are on the NJDOE website and see how we are comparing to other districts like ours.
Okay, so then what one was, um, that we received a D on?
I, that, that was pre me. I was sitting out there when we were still talking D and I didn't know then and I didn't, I don't know now.
I was just wondering if that was the same category place.
What, what I can tell you, Elaine, in, in all sincerity is, is what I reported on. When I was assistant superintendent, when I was appointed assistant superintendent, I was still also a high school principal. That was the summer of, the late spring, summer of the fourteen, fifteen school year. In August, I was the recipient along with Dr. Carino at that time of an email from the, the state top dog in, you know, um, the school performance. And she was looking for where our district improvement plan was because it had been overdue. And I was, I, I was actually on a family vacation. I opened this email and it was just, I can't tell you how many attachments that were like past due and when am I going to get it? And I didn't even know that we were in this situation. It had never been shared. So, when we put that all together, that had to go down directly to the state. At that point, once you're on a DIP, a district improvement list, that means, as you may know, you're getting monitored by the county every six months. And what they also do is your website becomes a window to your world. So, the county education specialists, every time they have some downtime, they're popping in and checking curriculum and seeing if you have this and seeing if you have that and calling you when they don't like what they say. All I can assert to you, I can't give you a rating. I can't give you a lettering, but I can tell you, Elaine.
I just don't maybe you know.
That in every, in every one of those visits, we have shown progress, growth and, and development. And that has been in both instruction, program and achievement. So, as, as, as long as it, you know, as long as we keep swinging up, I, I think the answer to that is that, that, that we're getting better. Um, but to, to, to put a letter or a grade or a number on it, I, I can't do it and I wouldn't trust any survey poll or rating. That's it.
Okay. Um, let me ask you another question. Uh, when was the last time our curriculum was updated?
It's, it's a work in progress, actually. Um, it was just, uh, updated and approved to meet all the NJSLS. Um, as you know, we left Common Core and went to the New Jersey State Learning Standards. So, that required to be done, checked and approved as of this past summer before the start of the year. That was done then. On January twenty-ninth, the education specialists came in, sent the data with us, went over curriculum and, um, we're, we're always continuing to revise them. As a matter of fact, I'm glad that you asked. We actually changed our curriculum. Um, and I see Teresa in, in the crowd there and she's, she's been tremendous with technology. She has transferred all of our curriculum, even though what the community is seeing is a read only, if you will. It brings you through Google Docs, which means when we sign on our way or teachers sign on their way, they're getting live, live, uh, living documents of it. And the reason we did that was because we want teachers to be able to comment when they're doing a unit or when they're doing a lesson in that space. What, what, how can we make it better? What else can we do? What do they think about it? What worked? What didn't? What materials might we add to it? So, we've really changed curriculum from being something static to being something alive and working all year long. Not a time when teachers come together in the summer and get pages to put something together on paper that may or may not work effectively in the lesson.
That does. Yeah, you got it. Um, the other thing is, is, um, you talked about the superintendent search. I'm just asking the school board to make sure they do well for the search. Get the best qualified person, but I wish you was still over here, but whatever. Um, and please, please, please do not waive the policy of the school board to circumvent getting a new superintendent. Because that's what happened the last time and that is not fair. You have policies in place. Make sure you enforce your own policies because that's what board members do. You set policy, you have a policy for superintendent, searching and policies for principal searches. Please do not waive these policies to play games. I'm just asking. Because you are talking about the children and giving them the best qualified people makes the best qualified schools.
Remember to talk to the children.
I know, but you know what I mean. Um, the auditors now. Did you change auditors by chance? Are you going to look into changing orders? Because it's, it's sort of like puzzles my head that. From two thousand fourteen to fifteen, everything was fine. He knew it was being transferred over and year and year and year and you got audits and everything was okay except when it got to a million dollars. I mean, not for nothing, but like, that's a problem. And I think that you should really look into changing auditors so you have people who will do what's right for this town and for the children and for the, um, employees so we don't come up with this situation again. And my last question, ethics classes. Have you been attending your ethics classes? Because you have to do that once a year. Everybody attended. Everybody's in compliance. Thank you.
Lynn? You good? Elaine takes care of everybody, doesn't she? She's just amazing. Who?
Can I ask?
Is that new? Did you sign off here? Okay. You have three minutes.
Two minutes, my so hope. And, uh, my question or comment from the camera you have for recording this thing. Now, the camera is obsolete. I go online to view your video sometimes and it's a load that function. I go online to view your video sometimes and it's in low definition. Why don't you upgrade it to high definition or ultra-high definition now?
There's a gentleman right over there.
You can, you can actually donate your camera and can use it up there if you'd like.
You wanna donate your camera?
My camera is a pretty cheap camera, I mean, you guys have really dollar deficient, I mean, you can afford something there.
That's why we're, we're using that camera.
Oh, good branded, high definition, four K cameras, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars.
When we get out of a million point two, we'll look into a high def camera. I promise, unless you wanna donate one.
Well, I may, but it's not a fundraiser.
Well, there you go, start one, we'll put a high def one.
But if you have to link it up anywhere, I just give a fella a.
We, we will when we get out of the one point five million, one point four million.
And we have a question going around.
Yeah.
A big issue going around, it's being discussed about this town is problem of nepotism out here. Is that regarded as one of the reasons behind the definition?
Absolutely. Hmm, negative.
I mean, nobody's being favored in getting jobs or pay raises because they're related to somebody.
No.
Are contracts being given out to people who are particularly more powerful in town?
No.
All winning bids?
No.
Are all contracts given after bids?
Yes, I can turn you over to our business administrator. He can tell you the process that happens to, in order to get on the bid list, okay?
Any new vendor that wants to get into the district has to apply, get reviewed. And then if I'm gonna change the scope of bidding or wanna go out to a put out to bid and then all bidders submit applications and then the lowest bidder gets it. That's how it should, that works. Anyone to bid for it, that's how it's done, the lowest bidder gets it. So it's advertised, it's sent out, bids come in, reviewed and then the lowest bidder.
The lowest responsible bid.
Right.
You don't have to take the lowest.
The review process, what, what does your review process involve? On what criteria somebody approved or disapproved?
It's all the guidelines, the state guidelines, what you have to approve and disapprove based on. And it's all laid out for you, it's gonna follow protocols and do your research on them, once they're bidding the contract you want.
Now, one more question I have is, am I good at that, a lot of stuff, to save money, a lot of stuff, which is proven out as contracts can be done internally by the internal staff? A lot of prepare work, a lot of fixing?
Yeah, so, yeah, so if you were, if you were at our, our, our meeting in the summer, we actually, after reviewing the, the, the finances of the district and realizing that we had to be a little more self-sufficient in our smaller repairs, the board supported the hiring of two highly skilled maintenance workers. And that has vastly decreased our dependency on outside vendors and has allowed us to not only become more self-sufficient in making repairs and doing even, even projects, but also allowed us to get those done with flexible work schedules for such people. So for example, when work has to be done in a classroom and we can't do it with students there, they will then come in after hours to get the work done. If we were doing that with a vendor, we typically be paying some type of overtime. So, yeah, they, they have been critical to, to our self-sustainability.
How much do you estimate that's gonna save? I mean, is it gonna be substantial amount?
Ooh.
We thought it was already seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy thousand dollars? And you just started that effort, so is it possible you can expand upon this effort and save us some more?
That's the goal, yes.
Thank you, everybody, come on. Thank you, good questions. Megan?
I'm good, thanks.
Megan?
Many after.
Jerry? Jerry, all right.
Good evening, I had a lot of questions prepared for tonight. Good for John Freeman. Thank you, good portion have been answered. One of the things, before I ask the question, when Mr. Marco came as our superintendent, it was a pretty dark time in our school district. And in the two years or twenty months that you had said since you've been here, things have really turned around. And it's something that as teachers and their parents in the district, the teacher and the parent in the district, it, it was shocking when we found out that we were leaving, it was really a very bad time. My question is, has anyone attempted to get Mr. Marco to rescind, rescind her resignation?
What do you think?
I'm not sure. That's why I'm asking.
Well, then, you're not. I, I don't wanna make dirt in Mark, but yes, we have.
Okay, thank you.
To put it my way.
The second question I have is in relation to the Di Maria firm. Four years of financial audits from the Di Maria firm led us to this position. Is there any plan for legal recourse to the Di Maria firm with one point four million dollars missing from the public funds, not missing, but misspent, there it was? Is there any legal recourse that can be taken to improve some of that?
Sure, and I'll answer that. In the wake of the December meeting, the disclosure of the one point one million dollar deficit plus down the three hundred thousand dollar Title I deficit, which equals one point four, I just wanna make sure later we're talking about the same number. The board and the administration has been, it's one point four. Okay. The board's focus, or at least the administration's focus, has been on ensuring compliance and responding to the county office, preserving programs and preserving things for the students. I think there's gonna be a time for review and determining if there are options or whether or not that any options might be valuable. It would be disingenuous for me to say otherwise. However, given the fact that the board is now internalizing and having to contend with this dramatic deficit, the focus, I think, in speaking on behalf of the administration, has been on determining what remedies we have in terms of what the state of New Jersey and the Department of Ed will say to us, preserving our programs for the students and preserving the staff members and, and everybody's position here. That has been the focus. There will be a time and a place for that kind of review, but at this time, I just wanted you to know where the administration's focus has been.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, good time.
Thank you, Harrison.
You said one thing, you said that the bids are based on the lowest.
Reasonable bid. Reasonable bids. We don't have to take the lowest bid unless we think it's.
I want you to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Exactly correct. We think it's best, exactly. Thank you. Okay. Well, that wraps it up, everyone had their say. Need a motion to adjourn? All in favor? We are adjourned. Rich Tuero. Rich Tuero, would you report to the podium, please?